Well, good evening. This is Greg Ferris, President of the Forney ISD Board of Trustees. And I hereby call this Board of Trustees meeting to order. It is now 6:04 PM, and I certify a quorum as present that the meeting has been posted in time and manner required by law. The month meetings are open to the public, although those meetings or public comments and questions from the audience will be confined to the time designated for citizens to address the board. Thank you again for attending tonight. At this time, we're going to take item number 14 out of order, and the board will now convene into closed session. No voting will take place in closed session. Any action the board wishes to take will result and will be discussed when we come back into open session later. At this time, it will go into closed session at 6:05 PM. Under Texas Government Code 551-129-551074, 551071. Well, good evening, and welcome to our Forney ISD Board of Trustees meeting this evening. I'm Greg Ferris, President of the Board. And first, I want to say thank you for the beautiful music we had by one of our very own students. That's Michaela Hernandez, and she's a third grader at Blackburn Elementary. Let's give her a hand. And now, at this time, we'll move on to our invocation. Our invocation is now be led by Erin Castellanos from New Community Church of Forney. We're welcome to, glad to have you with us, and welcome the new church to the Forney family. Let's rise for the prayer.
Good evening, everyone. Let's pray. Father, we thank you for this opportunity to be able to come here together, God. We thank you for the opportunity to be able to partner with you to make an impact in this community, in the life of students, and in the lives of families. Lord, your word says that if we lack wisdom, we can ask you for it, and you give it to us graciously. So I pray for your wisdom, Lord, to fill this room. I pray for unity, and I pray for understanding. God, let us unite together with one mission, and that's to make an impact here in this city. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Thank you, guys.
Let's move on to item B, our pledges. Tonight, we have our Students of the Month. At this time, I'd like to introduce Ms. Molly Pearl, Principal for Jackson Middle School. I'll introduce our Secondary Student of the Month, followed by Nancy McElroy, Principal of Johnson Elementary, to introduce our Elementary Student of the Month.
Good evening, Dr. Terry. I am in Florida. It is a privilege for me to recognize one of Jackson Middle School's five. At this time, I would like to recognize Navia Walker. Navia is joined tonight by Mom Chazzy Walker, older sister Essie Doos, and Sister Nigel Walker, who's a freshman going by. Navia, her teachers had amazing things to say about Navia. She is involved in advanced classes, choir, dance, and girls' team. Some of the words that the teachers used to describe her were kind, extremely polite, respectful, positive, looks for ways to make others smile, and is joyful. When I asked Navia what her favorite thing about Jackson was, she said her teachers. She also said because her favorite color was purple. And when Navia grows up, she wants to be a dance teacher. She has been inspired by our dance teacher and who she takes for dance and is on the girls' team, Colton Coleman. And so, we've already told her about it. She's got a job at Jackson Middle School, and she wants to come back and be a student at Jackson Middle School. So again, with great honor, one of our five, Navia Walker.
Good evening, members of board and Dr. Terry. I'd like to introduce to you Alina Mary Wether. Alina is our Johnson Elementary Student of the Month. She's the daughter of Paciana Mary Wether and Timothy Mary Wether. She's a fourth grader at Johnson Elementary and is nine years old. Her sister Lizzie is here with us as well tonight. She's a secondary at Johnson. Alina loves sports. She is on the upper basketball team and loves to dribble. That's her favorite part of that. Ms. Anthony would be very proud. Her favorite subject is math, and she loves to add, subtract, divide, and multiply. She's very good at math, loves to math fact. We talked a little bit about our new building, and I asked her, you know, what she thought about it, and she loves it. It's sort of bigger, and colors are beautiful. She loves our collaborative spaces. She loves going up and down the stairs, and she loves all the beautiful windows upstairs in her floorplate classrooms. But finally, Alina loves to watch movies in the family. One day, she went through this thing where she grows up. She's a member of our Johnson choir. She also is into gymnastics. She loves trampoline and helps me to do five backhand sprays. Alina, some of her teachers, both from time for us for tonight, slept on three, wrote this pass to me. She says, "Where do I even begin with our sweet Alina? Alina is an intentionally kind and pathetic girl with a heart of gold. Alina always has a compliment or word of encouragement. Because she is so quiet in the way she helps others, I sometimes wonder how many of her good deeds go unnoticed. I am constantly surprised by the things she says and the level of creativity and care she puts towards every task. Alina is one of a kind, and I cannot think of a better student to represent Johnson Elementary. I am honored to be your teacher, and we are honored to have Alina as our fourth grade Johnson Panther representative tonight."
Please rise for our pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas side, I pledge allegiance to the United States, one state under God, one indivisible.
I'd like to ask Mr. Justin Etherly from the Forney Education Foundation if you would please come and share with us.
Members of the board, Dr. Terry. I'm here this evening representing the Forney Education Foundation, and I'd love to be a great guest to share with you all. The Forney Education Foundation's mission is to provide opportunities for excellence in education, promote innovation in teaching, and partner with the community to enhance the quality of education for all students at Forney ISD. One way we accomplish this is through our annual Innovative Teaching Grant Program. The foundation created the Innovative Teaching Grant Program in 2008 to recognize and support innovative and creative instructional programs that possibly impact students at Forney ISD. This is an annual opportunity for teachers to submit a grant request seeking additional funding. There's a competitive process with applications being reviewed by campus principals, department managers, Forney ISD administrators, and the foundation grant committee. This year, we received 98 applications, and I'm happy to announce we are funding 52 of those requests. Our highest amount of grants awarded in a year to date. This would not be possible without the amazing support of the foundation's board of directors, the foundation's grant committee, collaboration with Forney ISD leadership, and the Forney community for its continual support of the Adopt a Grant Program. I would like to thank the bowling groups and individuals for this year's additional funding of the teaching grants. Chris Wolf PTO, Claybin PTO, Crosby PTO, Warren PTO, Cooper Scottish Childcare, Noel Lorraine, Zon Chink's Care, Inspiration Roofing and Construction, the Turner Family, the Salgado Family, and Madre's Christina. So finally, I ask that you please accept this year's total awarded amount of $115,099 in donations.
Board, I've heard this recommendation from Justin. Do I have a motion from the board to accept it?
Absolutely.
Thank you, Ms. Dobbs. Have a second.
Sir.
Mr. Regan, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I hear none. Thank you, and congratulations. possible, because that does touch many lives in all campuses. So, thank you so much. We're going to move on next, then to Griffin PTO, and I'd like to ask Kristin Zestepel if she would.
Absolutely. So, for the Griffin PTO, are we starting with the Forney Soccer Association?
I'm Griffin Elementary.
Okay. The Griffin, because we have two donations tonight, so this is, it's a wonderful thing to have so many donations. So, tonight, our Griffin PTO, Griffin Elementary, I believe we have our President Jessica Thornton Island and our PTO Vice President Tina Sorensen deal with us, and our Principal Christy Crabtree. They are here tonight. Griffin Elementary has, the PTO is wanting to give a donation in the amount of $9,500 to use the funds for the betterment of staff and students at Griffin Elementary, so we were hoping the board would accept this donation.
Is that, or do I have a motion from the board?
We do, yeah.
So, ma'am?
I have it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I hear none.
Could we have you join us for a picture? And bring the kiddos.
Yes. So, our Forney Soccer Association, and I believe we have Antonio Castaneda and Ron
Cook here this evening, they are wanting to donate $8,642 to put a fence around the Henderson Playground. And so, they are here this evening, and we're asking that you consider this donation.
Is there a question? Can you just grant to a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I hear none.
And if we could have Mr. Castaneda and Mr. Cook join us for a picture? So, this year, we have some incredible church partners who have adopted all of our campuses across the district. So, throughout the year, we are going to take time to stop and honor each one of these incredible partners. So, this evening, I'm going to turn it over to Nick Edwards to honor our first Forney Family Award for this year.
Thank you, Kristin. Dr. Terry, School Board, I'm excited to be able to present this award. The Forney Family Award goes to people or organizations that represent the very best of our Forney community. Lake Point Church has gone above and beyond just continuing to serve our students and our staff this year. This year, Lake Point has adopted both Forney High School and Warren Middle School. They have worked to serve these campuses by being part of our Principals and Pastors meetings. They have worked with Dr. Benjamin to assess the needs of students on their campus. For example, Lake Point Church collected over 400 polo shirts, dress code shirts, in order to provide for students that did not have. And talking to Dr. Benjamin about that, he said it made a direct impact on classrooms by preventing any type of discipline measures. And so, today, I am grateful for Lake Point Church and how they really have been part of our Forney family, stepped up, and really embody the very core value of relationships first. Lake Point Church.
Yes. that have served our country. And tomorrow is Veterans Day, so we always ask our staff to let us know if they've served. Several of them said they could be in attendance here tonight, so those that RSVP'd, yes, I'm going to call out their name with their certificate. We have several others that could not join us this evening, and so, we will make sure we get their certificate to them on their campus. And if for some reason, we didn't have you down as attending, I certainly have your certificate over here, so we want to make sure if you're here that we get to recognize you this evening. And so, I'd like to start with Rashina Banks from North Forney, who served as a Chief Legalman for 20 years in the U.S. Navy. Is she with us this evening? Okay. Mr. John Barber at Jackson, who was a sergeant for six years in the Army. Lloyd Browning, works here at our administration. He was a Lance Corporal for three years in the Marines. Tracy Clay from North Forney, who was a Second Lieutenant for four years in the Army. Kenneth Coleman from Forney High School, who was an E-5 for six years in the Navy. Joshua Denny from Forney High School, who's a Specialist for four years in the Army. Yes. Samuel Espinoza from Warren, who was a Staff Sergeant for 20 years in the Army. Stephanie Givens from our Administration Building, who was a Petty Officer Third Class for four years in the Navy. Louis Grant, who was Support, a Chief Warrant Officer for four, or, excuse me, Chief Warrant Officer Four for 33 years in the Marines. Cody Hartley from Forney Learning Academy, who was an E-4 for four years in the Marines. Natalie Herford, who's from North Forney with an E-4 with six years in the Navy. Carol Comazars, I apologize if I butchered that name, from Jackson, who was a Captain for 15 years in the Air Force. Jennifer Limerick from Rhodes, who was a Sergeant for eight years in the Army. Tina Maurice from Rhodes, who was a Master Sergeant for 25 years in the Air Force. Jimmy Parton from Forney High School, who was a Sergeant for nine years in the Marines. Rodrick Williams from Forney Learning Academy, who was a Sergeant for six years in the Marines. And do I have any others who may not have RSVP'd this evening? Yes, and he, I'm going to give him a hard time because he forgot to fill out our form, and he's down the hall from me, but Mr. John Chase, who I believe served in the U.S. Marines.
Army.
Army, I'm so sorry. I know. So, we want to thank you all for your service and love to take a picture with you at this time.
Thank you all for your service to our country and to our community. At this time, we'll take a brief recess, and then we'll resume in just a moment. Thank you very much. At this time, we'll resume picking up with item number seven, Public Hearing, the School Finance, Financial Integrity Rating System. At this time, I'd like to call Mr. John Chase, our Chief Financial Officer, to the microphone.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. As you pointed out, we are here to discuss our financial integrity rating that we received from TEA. The last, I guess, it was finalized this past week. They issued the preliminary, I believe it was back in late August, and it was finalized again, like I said, last week. And so, just to start off with, the first rating is an overview. Every year, the TEA assigns a rating to each school district and charter school in the state, and the purpose of the rating is to measure the quality of financial management practices and to improve performance in the management of financial resources. As far as the rating goes, there's 20 indicators, and they can be divided into three sections. There's critical solvency and financial competency. The data that's used for tonight's rating that we're going to be discussing was reported to TEA in our 2021 fiscal year audit, annual audit report, or financial report. So, a maximum of 100 points can be assigned or awarded, and a rating of A, B, C, or F is assigned. And so, just starting off with the critical indicators, and they're affectionately known as that, as such, because failing to me, eating one of these measures gets you an automatic F on the rating. And so, just first off, did we file our annual financial report by the stated deadline? In our case, we have to send it to TEA no later than November 27th, I believe. And so, as you know, we just got our audit report last, in October, delivered to us, and so, we never really have a hard time filing by the deadline here. Did we get an unmodified audit, a report or an audit opinion? And basically, that means that in the opinion of our independent auditor, did our financial statements present fairly in all material respects, our financial position at year end? Next, were we in compliance with all debt repayment obligations? In other words, did we default on any debt? And next, did we make timely payments to the teacher retirement system, the Texas Workforce Commission, or the IRS? And the last indicator, number five, isn't scored this year, and so, we won't really talk about it, but I'm happy to report that we did meet each one of these measures. Moving on to financial solvency, these measures basically measure our financial strength. And to start off with, I believe there's nine of these indicators, and the first, the first one is, do we have a decline in our fund balance of more than 25% over the last three years? And as you know, our fund balances has actually been increasing year over year, so we're in pretty good shape there. Do we have more than 90 days of cash on hand, cash and investments? And as you know, we've reported in the past, we certainly meet that standard. And was our current assets to current liability ratio greater than three to one? In other words, do we have $3 of assets to every dollar of current liabilities? And we've met that standard as well. And is our revenues greater than, greater than or equal to expenditures? And that's important. You know, if it's the other way around, it's not long, and then you'd be filing financial exigency, and so, that's one of those measures that if we are having, having problems with that, that you know early enough to where you can do something about it. But happy to report again that we have no problems there. Number 10 was not scored. They didn't score that this year, I think, mainly related probably to the coronavirus pandemic. You know, there were some districts, I think, that probably would have had trouble with their budgets meeting with their actual and comparing that variance at being more than a 10% change because of enrollment decreases and things like that. So, they chose not to score that this year and gave everybody 10 points for that, for that indicator. And then, number 11, no more than 60 cents of long-term liabilities for every dollar of current assets. And basically, the long-term liabilities, that's the principle on our bonded debt. And so, we are running a little higher than that in this district, but they give us a pass because we're fast growth, and they recognize the fact that we have to issue a lot of debt in order to keep up with the building to meet the needs of our kids in our school system. And so, we're running about one to one in our district right now. But again, happy to report that we got full points on all these indicators. And then, the last three on the solvency indicators is our debt per $100 of property value is less than 4 to 1. In other words, we have, for every $4 of principal bonded debt, that we have, you know, $100 of property value. And so, in that category, again, we're running a little higher than the state's benchmark on that, so we did lose some points there, and we'll talk about that one in just a second. Administrative cost ratio is basically 8.5%. Were we below that? And I'm happy to report that we are. And then, did our student to staff ratio decline more than 15% over the last three years? And I think, I think ours declined maybe 5% year over year, or in that three-year time span, so we're certainly within that, within that threshold. So, we did lose four points. As I pointed out, on indicator 12, we are running about a little over $9 for every $100 of assessed value right now. And again, I don't think that's uncommon with districts that are fast growth like we are. We have to issue a lot of debt early on in order to meet the needs of our growing school district, and so, it's going to be probably like that for the next few years until our property values grow and we catch up to that. But the rest of the indicators, again, we got full points on that. Moving on to the financial competency indicators, I mean, these measure basically the financial or performance in meeting effective business practices in the district. And so, number 15 there, again, it was not scored. Again, I think that was probably related to the coronavirus pandemic, that ADA projections versus, you know, what they actually came in at, that there's a difference between there, a significant difference, and they would, you'd lose points in that category. But again, because of the pandemic, they chose to give everybody max points in that category. We didn't really have, and we did, we did, we were a little bit below our ADA projection. You know, actually, we were actually above what we actually submitted in the biennial measure there, but, and as you know, we've been getting underpaid over the last couple of years, but still, we're certainly within the allotted range. I don't think even if we would have scored that, we would have probably gotten max points on it. On the next one is the PEMS data that we, that we submit to. On the, the next one is, is the PIMS data that we, that we submit to TEA, and that's, that's basically all of our financial data, along with student attendance and so forth. But they compare that financial data submission to our annual financial report to see if there's any discrepancies in what we report to them versus what was in our annual audit. And we don't have any discrepancies there. And in our audit, do we have, were they free of reported weaknesses in internal controls? And in the year under consideration here, we were happy to report that we had no weaknesses in internal controls. And then, 18 is free, was our annual financial report free of instances of material non-compliance of federal grants. And again, we had no problems with that as well. And then, all the postings that are required on our, on our webpage, we certainly have a lot of financial data out there on that finance and budget webpage that certainly invite anybody that would like to go out there and take a look at it. It's there for, for your review. And so, happy to report, we got full points on each one of those. And then, the last one that we have in the, in the competency indicator arena is property value discussion with the board. And as you know, during the spring, when we, when we talk about our budget and our projected property values, we talk about this a lot during the budget process with, with the board. And so, I think most of, most of the board is well aware where we're at and what percentage growth and how that, how that correlates to increasing or decreasing our state funding accordingly. So, we got max points for that, for staying on top of that as well. So, in the, in the end, as far as the district rating, the actual rating, we got out of 100 points, we've got 96, and that is an A rating or superior rating. And that's the, that's the first report, and if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Chase. Are there any questions from the board? If you're done, Dr. Terry?
I just wanted to add a few things, if that's okay. John, I believe this is seventh year running.
I think that's right, yes, sir.
Yeah, seventh year running that we've received the highest rating that you can receive from the state of Texas on, from a financial standpoint. And I just have to take just a second to compliment John and his team for what they do. It is a, it is a small workforce, but they work very big, and they do a great job for us, taking care of our, our dollars and the reports that are submitted. So I just wanted to say thank you for the work you do and your team. Seven years in a row running, that's a, that's a great feat.
Yeah, thank you. We do have a lot of folks in the business office that are very competent, and I'm very fortunate to have the folks working for us. We, we get a lot done with a little bit of staff, as you mentioned.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chase, for your leadership, because that staff needs a great leader, and you do a great job with that, so we appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It is now 7:42. We'll call this public hearing closed. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
No.
Thank you, Ms. Dobbs. Have a second?
Say.
Mr. Reagan, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? If you're none. We're moving on then to item eight, reports. Eight A is the new STAR EOC update by Dr. Judy Weber.
Good evening, Mr. Ferris, school board members, and Dr. Terry. I wanted to just spend a few minutes and explain some of the changes that will occur in this year's assessment cycle as we head into second semester. So, in a nutshell, there's a whole kind of STAR redesign that's a result of some legislation that came out actually in 2019. And so, it's finally coming into play this year. Now, when they put this legislation in play back in 2019, they had no idea this would be coming on the heels of a pandemic. So we're still reeling from some of the academic gaps from some of the students who were home during the COVID kind of mess, and then now, we have some significant changes to the way our students will be assessed from the state. I'm going to cover the new questions types with some examples, and I have five examples to show you. But some other things I wanted to mention was this idea of the paper test going away. We do have one, one student or so that can still use a paper test, but there has to be some extenuating circumstances. They're all online now. We're going to have new question types, and the cross-curricular passages are going to be a significant change, because their reading passages that they read will all come from the prior year's social studies or science content. So if you're a freshman in English I, you will have reading passage from your eighth grade science year, and then you'll have to answer questions. Evidence-based writing, which is new for us, the fourth and seventh grade writing tests no longer exist. Every grade, Spanish or English, third through English II, will have an essay at this point. And so, then, online testing and accommodations, the one bonus of this, by already being online, all of our students who get and receive specific accommodations, those will be embedded into the online system, so they won't have to have a different proctor trying to remember, do you get this accommodation or that? They can actually be built into the test. But I did want to spend some time going over some examples of what our students will face, because we do believe this will have a significant impact on the scores that we see this year. In fact, the state also believes that we'll see a reduction in scores, and it's going to look like schools are underperforming, but a lot of this will be because there are 14 new types of questions our students will face that they've not had before. And even if we read the names like hotspot, until you even know what that means, it's not intuitive enough to go, what is a hotspot? So I picked a few for you to see tonight, and I want to show you just a couple elementary examples. First one here, a student might have to read a poem of sort about some pants. Then they're going to read the question carefully and record their answer. Then the question says, what is most likely the reason? Which also brings some lack of confidence, because if the state's already saying what's most likely the reason why this is what, then the kid's thinking, well, I guess I'm gonna have to pick out an answer that most likely answers this. So imagery, and then they're going to have to basically type in a word response. So they're gonna have to then cite evidence from the poem. So I included the real answer that the STAR state put in there, and I thought you might like to know, this is a question that our third graders will face. Moving on. Here's something called hot text. So they're reading about a cactus from the prior year's science content, and then they're supposed to select two answers to describe why the cactus is difficult to harvest. So they have to then drag and drop their cursor and highlight only specific text and that text only, not a sentence or word more, and not a word less, and get both sections correct. This is an example from fifth grade. Looking at some secondary examples, this is very new for us. Here's an expression. What's the simplest form of the expression? Type in a mathematical response. And so, we highlighted, there's some, some new things here. The state thinks that a dot should stand for multiplication, yet that's not typically what a kid sees. There's some new symbols in there that we're going to have to make sure students practice, use routinely. And then, they have to come up with, let me go back, a typed equation edited mathematical response, instead of just choosing one out of four answers. And then, here's a new one. So again, there's multiple steps to our test. You have a question, there's a function up there. Select the type of graph. So when a student does, a graph appears, but that's not all. Then they have to drag two points and the asymptote, and then decide what the graph should be after you get the first graph. You have to then create a new graph on the test format. And then finally, another type, three points are shown, graph the line of symmetry of this equation, and so they start having to plot dots, and then a graph will appear. So significant changes from the multiple choice format our students have faced for years, and this because the legislature said that a test can no longer have anything more than 75% of the test represented in multiple choice format. So 25% of the questions have to be the new question types. Then finally, there's for science, they'll have a list of words, and they have to kind of drag and drop one or two answers per blank, and then make sure you get them in the right order, because if you flip them, you can get the answer wrong also. So again, there's a level of difficulty that is going to be significant. So then, it comes to scoring. I know only 25% of the questions will be represented in this format, but it can count up to 35% of their score. So over a third of the scoring will be the new question types. So that will really significantly impact student performance, especially our ELLs, our students who are just learning English, it's quite a bit more difficult. So we have a response. I don't want to just present that there's this scary new test. We're doing all we can. Our future-ready curriculum has included cross-curricular passages. They've included the new question types for our teachers to use. We've been doing cognitive formative assessments for two years, and in this way, our students have been writing short answer responses weekly for the last two years. The new difference is they have to be competent to type those responses into that little blank, and then make sure that it's correct for the graders. We're also going to take advantage of STAR interim. We have done that for the last two years, and we consider that a really great at-bat. It's coming up next week, and it's very important that our students take this type of test and see how it really plays out for them and how their scores come out, and then we'll take another one again in March. So for English and math, we have two practices. For science and social studies, we'll just have the Barch example, but that will come into play next week. Keyboarding is really going to become a much greater focus, especially in elementary library rotations. Those third graders will have to type in that response and that essay, and keyboarding will be pretty important. And thankfully, due to the wisdom of the board and, and Dr. Terry's guidance, we've been a one-to-one district for years. So our students have been using their Chromebooks. We've been assessing online for the last two years. And so, we've already gone through the hurdles of kids trying to read on a screen and answer on a screen, so we're very thankful. Many districts are going online for the first time this year. So that is one thing where the wisdom of being a one-to-one district is an advantage for our students. So, one of the things we're having to contend with is our LMS Canvas does not have all these question types available, so our teachers are having to be really creative and do some of these on paper, because we haven't had full capability of mimicking this due test format. But we just wanted to make you guys aware of some of the changes, since iSTAR comes next week, some students may be talking about, I took a practice STAR exam. And so, we're really excited to get that data and then see what do we need to do in response to that as we move into the next semester. So at this time, I'd like to see if you have any questions over the new STAR EOC format. I can have some sample exams if you'd like, if you'd like to take some of those.
Thank you, Dr. Webber, for sharing that information. We appreciate it. We'll move on then to 8B, learning management system update. Ms. Kim Horsak.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. I'd actually like Stacy Joseph, our director of, I don't know what all she does. I know she does all of our instructional technology in our libraries, and a great job at all of those things. Her team has been very busy this year. They are single-handedly taking on our Virtual Learning Academy, and at the same time, working to develop a new learning management system. And I'm really just very proud of the work they're doing. Tonight, Stacy's going to kind of talk you through kind of the progress, where we are in our learning management system, and we are going to start rolling this out to our teachers in December. And so, before you start hearing anything about, we wanted to just kind of let you know where we are in it. She's going to walk you through all the different parts, but you hopefully are going to find some good news based on what Dr. Webber just shared, so. Stacy?
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Horsak. Good evening, Dr. Terry and school board. This evening, I would like to talk to you about our new learning management system, EdQuallus, and how it is going to have a positive impact on our students, our staff, and our parents. I also want to let you know that they did use the name EdQuallus, and I felt like we needed to fortify it, so you will hear me call it Eddie Q. So it just sounds a little bit more fun. As you know, we have used Canvas for the past eight years to serve our students and our teachers. While Canvas was the best product on the market, we made our initial purchase. It was designed for college-level teaching and uses a linear approach to learning. Over the past eight years, public education has changed immensely, and unfortunately, Canvas has not grown or adjusted with the changes. For our district to ensure we have a strong LMS, we would have to use multiple products to enhance Canvas, and this is very costly. In addition, it makes it difficult to determine what the cause of an issue is when a module breaks in Canvas, since we use them as third party. Because of this, the board approved the move to a new learning management system last year, and we began our journey building a true K-12 LMS. At a previous school board meeting, I had the opportunity to introduce a product called EdQuallus, formerly known as Olay. This company reached out to us because our reputation as an innovative district who is on the cutting edge of technology. Through this partnership, we were asked to help build a product that was specific to K-12 education, providing a robust, tailor-made platform for our teachers, staff, and our EdQuallus will bring many benefits to our teachers, students, and parents from the onset that we will be enhanced as we learn and grow with this product. There are four main reasons EdQuallus is a game changer for Forney ISD. The platform will provide a product aligned to our in-house curriculum. It will meet the needs of the new TEA testing requirements, and includes AI ability differentiation, STAR and EOC questioning types, and over the next four, few years, will become a one-stop shop for teachers due to the integration of all of our programs. One of the many advantages of EdQuallus has over the other LMSs on the market is the ability that we can transfer our teacher courses inside of Canvas straight over to this new LMS, EdQuallus. That'll be the number one thing our teachers ask when we roll this out, and this will be the first thing that we inform our teachers. Everything will move from Canvas over to EdQuallus. Over the next several years, teachers will be able to use EdQuallus as their one-stop shop. At this time, educators work on multiple platforms to take attendance, grades, assessments, student information, and much more. With the completion of this product, EdQuallus will be the first platform that will allow us to perform all our roles in one spot. One of the features teachers will love is the AI ability in this LMS. Let me give you an example before I explain what it can help our teachers to do. Think about your social media and how you can look up a topic online, and the next thing you know, the topic shows up on your Facebook page. That this same AI ability is going to be built into Eddie Q, which will allow features such as, the ability for a teacher to import an article of any length, then ask Eddie Q to populate questions based off of the what, when, where, et cetera, questions, about 10 types. The teacher will then put the system, tell the system how many number of questions they want and what types, and the system will actually populate the questions for the teacher, and then the teacher can go in and manipulate the questions and change it to exactly what they want. Students will have the ability to take an article that would be covered on a quiz or test and have the system populate review questions designed for that specific content. But wait. A teacher also has the ability to create a short answer or essay, think about those three to five-page papers, and have the system grade it for them. All they have to do is import three to five correct papers for the AI system to read, then the teacher can actually have the AI system grade the other 125 papers. A teacher can even use student papers as the correct papers. It can also support our learning checks and future-ready curriculum by having the same standards across the district. Another reason is the ability to differentiate inside the learning management system. Over the next two slides, I'm going to show you some examples. The first one is that we have the ability to differentiate based on learning styles. So for example, if I was going to have a course and Dr. Terry and Mr. and Ms. Horsak were in my course, they would each get to choose the route that they would want to go. So for example, Dr. Terry would want to learn by video, and Ms. Horsak would like to learn by reading her articles. They will both learn the same content, and they will both end up in the same place to take the assessment to ensure learning has taken place. However, this LMS also has the ability to have branching logic in there. So after Dr. Terry and Ms. Horsak take their exam, based on their score, they'll be routed for intervention or another platform, another assessment or another practice if needed. So for example, if Ms. Horsak did well and made a 95, she would slide into the next discussion post. Dr. Terry did not listen very well to his video, so he slid into the 60/70 range, so we're going to rewrap him back to watch the video again, do a small little T-piece, and then we will slide him back into the discussion to catch up with his others, others' peers. The good thing is, is that not one student can see where the other student is going. So it differentiates based on what the student is doing. The last feature I'd like to talk to you about is the ability to teachers to build their lessons around the new TEA question types. As you heard, Dr. Webber talk about the new expectations on how our students will take standardized tests. This LMS is designed for each question, allowing our students to learn while practicing the different testing types. Our teachers will be able to design an assessment with these specified testing question types. At this time, we are using multiple products along with Canvas to serve our students, so this will be a more streamlined, more manageable approach. In an assessment, you can have multiple different types based on what you can do with inside of this platform right here. The final thing I'd like to show you tonight is our new parent portal that will offer our parents, many of you, a new process to view your child that is more streamlined and a lot easier to use. The first big change will be each parent will actually have a unique dashboard, similar to what the teacher will see. This will allow parents a quick glance at attendance- This will allow parents a quick glance at attendance, courses, grades, announcements, and events, and even be able to make payments. Also, teachers who are parents in the district will have the ability to toggle between each role without having log out of one and logging back into another. As you can see, this is an example of the teacher dashboard. I did change the names because it did actually have, it was actually an old school board member that we were testing with on here, so I had that. But, you can see, you can see both of your students on here. You have the ability, the yellow arrows right there drops down to give you a full version of attendance, courses, and grades. The announcements for both campuses will be on this side. As you can see, we've got two students, one at Forney and one at Lewis. A parent can actually toggle between the two campuses if they just want to see what's going on at Lewis, or if they just want to see what's going on at Forney. They also have the ability to toggle to Forney ISD to be able to see what events are going on there. On the left-hand side is the main dashboard for you to go very quickly in between these areas if you want a full page and see more of the information. The first thing is our parent attendance. You can see when we open that up, it's very easy to read. There is a toolbar on the right-hand side, and when this is built out, it will have the ability for parents to put their parent note or their doctor's note right into this platform for us to easily receive. The second thing is our courses. Parents will have a quick glance at every course that their student is in. You can also see on the left-hand side, they can click on the course that will take them automatically into that platform so they can see what their students are doing. On the right-hand side is the ability for our teachers, parents, and students to talk back and forth to each other. You notice the red dot. A red dot tells the parent that there is a message sitting there for them. And then, the ability to drop down grades, to get a very quick glance at what grades they are making at this time. Parents will also have a very quick access to both announcements and events, as I said, and they can toggle back and forth between the campus. And the last feature I will show you tonight is the ability for parents to know what money is owed, what dues are owed in their accounts. They will also have the ability to pay very quickly, and you will have the ability to see what your child ate at lunch. So, if they had three ice creams and no chicken sandwich, you know why they're probably not in a good mood when they get home that night right there. Okay? Thank you very much. I appreciate your time, and I open it up for questions.
I have a question. I see that we're going to start training teachers on the new platform in December. Will there be a period of time from the migration where our teachers are toggling between Canvas and this new system? And if so, how long are they going to be doing that?
So, in December, we are going to do a kind of a hook rollout that will introduce the platform. And then, starting in January, we will begin training, but it's optional all through the spring. The required training will actually come this summer. So, teachers that want to begin to play and want to begin to get their content into this new LMS, I will tell you, we will have 15% to 20% of our teachers that are going to be very excited. I've already had a principal actually reach out to me. So, it'll just be a slow process starting in December. That'll take us all the way to August.
And in the August timeframe, will they then have to toggle between the two once it rolls out, or is it going to be like-for-like capability?
No, ma'am. Once we roll out, Canvas will disappear, and we will actually slide into Ed Qualus next year. You're welcome.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Moving on to item C, Annual Attendance Zone Modification Report. Ms. Kim Morseak.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris, board. So, as you know, we are opening Mary Lou Dewberry next school year, and so, we need students to go to school there. So, we worked with Rocky Garner and a new gentleman, Matthew Kluck, at Zonda, and they have put a pass-through and actually really found one really good option based on the numbers and what they're seeing as far as student enrollment goes to share with the board. So, I only have one plan to share with you from Zonda tonight. This is our current zoning map, just for your reminder. And the area we're going to be looking at is only on the north side of 80. This is Griffin Zone right now. As you know, they're pretty full, and so, we need to give them a little bit of relief. This is Crosby, Blackburn, and those are really the three main campuses that we're going to be affecting through this rezone. This is the new map, and as you can see, this is now, this light blue is Mary Lou Dewberry Elementary. Blackburn is a very dense population right here around it, but it's, we shrunk it way down. As you know, that is where our AFA is, and so, we have to make room for those AFA students. We did provide a little bit of relief here for Crosby, and then, Griffin was cut right here at 548. And so, that created this new zone for Mary Lou Dewberry. Before I move on, does anyone have any questions on the map itself? I'll show you what the enrollment looks like. So, what this does is brings Griffin down to about 631 students. As you will see, it continues to grow fairly quickly, but it gives us that cushion to get whatever is next developed. Really, the only schools that have a little bit of pressure on them are Lewis. That is a pretty set zone. It's almost a build-out, and although it gets pretty close, we think 900 can probably fit there if we pull special programs out. That 850 is when you have a lot of special programs in the building. And then, Criswell, which houses our dual-language, we realize that we're going to have to do something here after probably next school year. So, that's kind of what the numbers look like, and that is the one plan brought to us by Zonda. Any questions?
I see none. Thank you, Ms. Morseak, then. We'll move on to your next item, the Master Plan Update.
Thank you very much. I'm actually going to ask Jeff Fisher to come up and share with us the master planning update for this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Morseak. President Ferris, Dr. Terry, members of the board, good evening. Good to be with you again. I will run through the master planning update status report on our current construction projects. First, the Keith Bell Opportunity Central Project's coming along very well. As I'm sure you are all aware, you can see in that lower right-hand picture there, the first main truss has gone up, and it's welded in place, and they're getting ready to move on to the next one. The next two trusses will be done here within the next three weeks, and we'll be preparing for the topping-out ceremony that's scheduled to take place on December the 8th. The project's moving along very well. In addition to the steel, we're working around the perimeter of the arena, finishing out their framing and getting ready to finish out the first, second, and third floors. The precast panels for the storm shelter at the Fine Arts is up, and they're working on putting the double Ts in for the roof on that. And then, the steel structure for the ECC, Early Childhood Center, is up, and they've started pouring the slab, first-floor slab, and getting ready to pour the second-floor slab. Site work's coming along very well. Paving's, for the most part, done. They've started on sidewalks, and they're getting ready to pour the extension of Inspiration Way probably within the next two weeks on that one. That's a couple more progress pictures. Again, you can see the big truss there in that center picture. Mary Lou Dewberry Elementary School is also coming along very well. We are experiencing some steel delays on delivery, on the structural steel. That picture, both those pictures, are a little bit outdated. We have actually started on the exterior walls, the insulated concrete form walls. Some of those have started going up along the perimeter, and most of the paving for that project is also down.
Storm shelter is almost done.
The storm shelter is almost done, yep. The walls are up, and the double Ts have been placed, and they're getting ready to pour the roof on it. North Forney High School Freshman Edition, I'll kind of cover this one and the Forney High School Freshman Edition together. They're in basically the same place, working on foundations. Actually, the grade beams are in, and the concrete contractor's working on the pier caps for the foundation. This is, these two projects also are experiencing some steel delays. They're going to start delivering the floor steel for North Forney, I think, next week or the week after next. But, the way they've got that scheduled out is the final steel deliveries won't be until probably sometime in March on both of those projects. Paving's done on North Forney. We can't do much paving at Forney High until the tennis courts are out of the way. There's some, again, pictures of the pier caps and the paving being done. That's along the back of the property for that new road that's going to loop around on that bottom picture of Forney High School.
That road actually is in, all the way from the tennis courts to where the lay-down yard is in the back. So, they have almost 50% of that road in.
And last but not least, the transportation center. The new parking lot that's to the west of the current transportation is what you're seeing in that top picture. They've already started parking buses on that, and have moved off of the gravel lot that's behind the existing building. We've started removing the gravel and prepping that for paving. And then, the paving on the east side of the building is partially done. We can't completely finish that until the building's up. And we're working on the interior renovation and some finish-out on the interior there. You can see on the bottom, the metal building on that project is what's really driving the schedule for the building part of the project, and that's scheduled to be delivered sometime in January. So, as soon as that gets here, we'll be moving on that. Do you have something else?
I have more.
You have more after this, but...
That's your last.
Yeah, that's my last slide. I'd be glad to answer any questions if you have any. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher.
It was a little unfair of me to make Jeff present tonight. He's been in Disney, so he probably hasn't seen the projects. This building actually is running, they, I think, started double-siding some of the sheetrock in there. We plan on hoping to get them in the building when we get back from Christmas. So, it's a little further along than this as well. Thank you, Mr. Fisher. The other portion I have tonight is just a quick peek at the new middle schools. The bids for the middle schools are on the agenda during action a little bit later in the board meeting. This is a fly-through of the new Warren Mill School that I wanted to share with the board. So, normally, we would now show you a video of Timmer, but it looks just the same, except for it's green, so we're not going to do that. Instead, we're going to show you a few renderings. And I forgot to mention, but we do have Kate Dunphy here from Huggabee Architects. She's the principal architect on this and a great partner. She's designed two beautiful buildings for us. So, this is the front of Timmer. It looks just the same as Warren, except for its colors are green to match the feeder pattern of Ray. So, this is the hub showing those pops of green, and I think we all really like the way this green has turned out. It's very striking. Same thing, the bottom of that canopy was gold on the Warren side. Now, it's the green color. And then, just, this is looking from that catwalk in the hub down. So, those are our updates for the middle school for Warren and Timmer. If you have any questions for myself or Kate?
Thank you both. Great job, Kate. Appreciate it. Moving on to 8E, Monthly Financial Report. Mr. John Chase.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. Tonight, we're going to discuss the financial results through September of this current year. Just starting off with the general fund revenues. Year-to-date collected was 21.1 million, or 13% of the amount estimated. Included in that $21 million was 4.4 million of state aid that was actually earned in the prior year. We talked about this several times in the past, but we actually collected it in the month of September. Again, that was 4.4 million from the, that was earned in the prior year but not collected in the current year. It was deferred until this year and recognizes revenue now. As a comparison, last year at this time, we were at 14% collected, and this year, again, 13%, so pretty well right on target for revenue collections in the general fund. Moving on to expenditures in the general fund, year-to-date expenses was 46.4 million, or 28% of the amount appropriated. For comparative purposes, again, prior year, we were at 23% expended at this point. There's about a 5% differential in there, and as we discussed last board meeting, we had a lot of front-loaded capital outlay expenses this current fiscal year, and so, we were about 75% almost expended on capital outlay up through September. And so, as a consequence, our expenditures are actually running a little higher, but as we go through, progress throughout the year, those will come down and be more in line with what they were in the prior year. Moving on to food service revenues, year-to-date collected was 1.4 million, or 21% of the amount estimated. And included in that 1.4 million was 606,000 in collections from students for the plate lunches or for à la carte sales. The other 718,000 was federal reimbursements for our free school lunch and breakfast programs, as well as reduced lunches, and we actually get a little bit of a reimbursement even for full-pay kids and that that's included in that. But, total meals served, plate lunch meals served for the month that are reimbursable from the federal government was 120,000. Again, that's about 40% of our student body on a day-to-day basis would be eating that plate lunch. And so, that's pretty comparable to where we were at last year, even when we were serving them free for everybody. So, pretty well on target. Last year, for comparative purposes, we were at 20% collected at this point, so pretty much right on target with our revenue collections in the food service fund. Moving on to expenditures in the food service fund, we're at 1.1 million expended, which is 17% of the amount appropriated. And again, last year, we were at 17% as well. Finally, in the debt service fund, the revenue collected year-to-date is 280,000, which is only 1% of the amount estimated. We don't have a lot of revenue in the debt service fund at this point in time. We don't start getting our heavy tax collections until October, November, December, and January. And so, as we start reporting this, start next month, we should see quite a bit more revenue activity in the debt service fund. And again, the prior year, we were also at 1% at the same point in time. And then, finally, expenditures in the debt service fund, year-to-date is 20.6 million, or 60% of the amount appropriated. Prior-year comparison, we were at 67%. So, again, we mentioned this last month, but we made some early redemption payments last year, which is why we were running a little bit higher than we are this year as far as appropriation-wise. So, finally, the cash on hand at the end of, cash investment on hand at the end of September in the general... in the general fund, food service, debt service, capital project funds, total 487, or 86 million, the majority of which was in our capital project funds, funding these projects that we spoke to you about tonight in our master plan update. If there's any questions about the financial report, I'd be happy to answer them.
I hear none. We'll move on then to next item, quarterly investment report.
So again, this is activity reported through September of this year. Just to start off with, again, we had $487 million of cash investments on hand. That was either on deposit at our local depository city bank or one of three investment pools. And our interest rates that we earned on these deposits were 1.5% to up to 2.2%. And again, that's about, I would say, about 10 times more than it was just about 12 or 18 months ago. As you recall, we were not getting hardly anything in interest. I think it was down to like .2% at one point. So the interest earned for the quarter across all the funds is almost 1.9 million, certainly a lot more than in past years. So excited about that. Most of that interest is being earned in our capital project fund. That's where the largest balance is. But anyway, that's the investment report. If you have any questions, be happy to answer them.
Thank you, John. Appreciate that very much. Moving on then to first quarter tax collection report. Mr. Chase.
So this is a report in the first, starting this fiscal year on the first tax report that we have to bring to you. You know, our taxable property values this year is 8.3 billion, a little over 8.3 billion. And that's about 20, almost 29% in taxable value growth over the prior year. Now, that doesn't actually translate into almost 29% of property tax collection growth because, as you recall, we also compressed the tax rate this year as well. And so it's about 27 or so percent, 27 and .2 or so, as far as how that translates and what our actual tax levy is on that property value increase. We had no current tax collections for the quarter. You know, our property tax bills don't go out until October 1st, and so we won't start getting tax collections until the next quarter when we report to you at that time. Our delinquent tax collections for the quarter was 378,000. That's about .3% or so of our, expressed in the form as a percentage of our current levy. In prior years, we were running about .6, so almost double as far as a percent-wise. It's not really a lot of money when you look at it, as we were, I think we were averaging about $490,000. I don't look for that to be really that big of a deal. As you'll look over on the adjustment side of our roll, we actually had $400,000 of positive adjustments to our delinquent levy this year, which primarily would be related to ag rollback tax collections. The year before, we only had 200, so it was almost double this year. And so those taxes will certainly be collected at some point, and I feel really strong about how we'll, well, in the year, you know, our delinquent tax collection is pretty close to what we've always done. So that's the quarterly tax report. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I hear none. Thank you for all those reports, Mr. Chase. You're doing a great job. As usual, stay on top of it. Couple more rate hikes, maybe you'll make some more interest. Moving on to 8H, our notice of intruder detection audit. Mr. Joseph Sanders, chief of police.
Mr. Ferris, Dr. Terry, board, good evening. I have the privilege of giving you the notification as required by the state of Texas for the Texas School Safety Center regarding our intruder detection audit report findings for our campuses. It is the top priority of the Fornie ISD School District and the state of Texas is keeping students and staff safe every day. The Texas School Safety Center recently conducted an intruder detection audit at one of our, one or more of our campuses. The audits test whether the campuses are accessible to an unauthorized individual. This audit, conducted as part of Governor Abbott's school safety directives for all school systems following the tragedy in Uvalde, seek to help districts identify how campuses can improve safety for students, such as ensuring exterior doors are locked. The audit provides us with an opportunity to create a safer learning environment for our students and staff. We are working closely with our district's school safety and security committee to ensure that we are training all of our staff and securing our doors for the protection of everyone at our campuses. The support from the state in conducting the intruder detection audit is just one of the many actions we are taking to ensure our schools are safe. We know that this work does not end, and we appreciate the board's support. We acknowledge that parents and community members are likely very interested in the details of the audit results. However, it is in the best interest of the students that we do not share this information to the broader public, as it could lead to compromising important campus, important campus security information. Specific details of the intruder detection audit were discussed in the executive session and with the district's safety and security committee. The Fornie ISD School, Independent School District is committed to providing a safe and secure learning environment for our students and for our staff. Are there any questions? Thank you.
Any questions from the board? Thanks, Chief Sanders. Appreciate that report and update. Be sure and share with your team. We appreciate their hard work in keeping our students safe. Item nine, our public forum, and no one signed up to speak this evening, so we'll move on then to item 10, the consent agenda. 10A, approved minutes from October 3rd, regular meeting. 10B, approved the minutes from October 6th, special called meeting. 10C, approved the budget amendments. 10D, approved the district and campus performance objectives. 10E, approved the appointments of members of the school health advisory council. 10F, approved the purchase of wide area connection. 10G, the statement of impact from charter schools as listed there. The board may take action independently or collectively. Do I have a motion from the board?
President Ferris, I make that the approved consent agenda items A through G collectively.
Have a motion for Mr. Regan to have a second. Ms. Green, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? I hear none. Moving on to item 11, consideration and possible approval, pardon me? Yes. Approval of the send over purchase. At this time, Kim Morsec will share an update for us.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris and board. Robin Pierce unfortunately had a family emergency, so I'm pinch hitting for her tonight, so I apologize if I can't give you as many details as maybe she could have. I'm pleased to announce that the, our CTE director, Sarah Smith, wrote a grant. It has been accepted for a hundred, a little over $171,000 for the purchase of these state-of-the-art synthetic cadavers or send avers. This is next-gen stuff. Kids are going to be able to completely dissect these synthetic cadavers. The picture on the right is just really impressive to me. The organs all feel like real organs, and you see that thing on the mannequin's mouth. They can force air into that, and the kids can watch the lungs inflate and deflate, see what it does to the diaphragm. Just some really cool things. They actually live in these caskets that kind of roll out, and the kids work on them, and then they can roll them back, and it's just really, really cool. So normally, pardon me? Yes, sir. Normally, this would be consent approval, but it's such a big deal, we're asking for the board to approve this, a little over $100,000 purchase, so, thank you. I thought the slides were cool. So we would recommend the approval of this purchase, Mr. Ferris.
Thank you for that detailed explanation. We appreciate that. Any other questions from the board?
It's all covered by grant, that grant.
It's, it'll be paid for through a grant, yes ma'am.
Yes. Don't need more details about the grant announced later. Dr. Terry, do you have any further recommendations or more pictures?
First, I would say Ms. Morsec used to teach science and biology, and Ms. Green did as well. That's why they were so engaged. I was with Mr. Ferris. Move the slide forward. No, this is exciting for our kids in our career programs, and to be able to receive a grant for over $170,000 is a great accomplishment and something we want to celebrate, and we will do that in the future. But tonight, we would recommend to go ahead and get the purchase moving forward of the send-aver, I believe is the way to say that, at this time. So we would recommend approval from the board.
Thank you. Do you have a motion from the board?
Mr. Ferris. Mr. Ferris, I recommend that we do approve the send-aver cadaver purchase. Would love to have it around for us to see all those parts again.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Miss Burkhalter, did you have a second? Okay. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? And I hear none. Thank you very much. Moving on to item 12, consideration and possible approval of the 2425 school calendar as first reading. Ms. Morsec.
I will show you pictures. They won't be near as exciting. Thank you, Mr. Ferris. This is for first reading tonight. As you know, we adopt the calendar two years ahead of time, gives our families time to plan vacations whenever they need to and just really know what's coming up. This calendar is very similar to the calendar we had this year. It has the delayed start from a Monday to a Wednesday this time. I believe this year, we started on, oh, no, I'm sorry. Teachers come back on Wednesday, students don't come back till Thursday, just like they did this school year. It does go back to the full 10 days, no, kids come back on Wednesday, too. 10 days of teacher planning at the beginning of the year, built in. I know that was a little bit of a concern in the past. It keeps our fall break. There's a week-long break after each quarter. It also keeps at least a three-day weekend every month, and most months, at least a four-day weekend. Very similar to what you've seen in the past. It is still keeping with the full-day professional development the day before the long breaks instead of the half-day student day with the half-day teacher work day. That's been very well received. It pretty much looks like what you're used to. So any questions on the calendar at this point, or any adjustments or anything I need to look at?
No further questions. Dr. Terry, any comments?
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. I can't believe that this is about the eighth year we've had a very similar calendar. We were one of the first in the state to move to this type of an approach of a balanced look, and I think that's a trend that has moved across most of the state now. And so it is a very similar calendar. This is a first reading, just to remind you, board. If you do have feedback, we'd love to hear that for us to explore. And so if there's not a lot of questions, we would recommend moving this to the consent item in the December meeting for final adoption.
I hear no further questions. Ms. Elsie, please add this to the consent agenda for December meeting. And then we'll move on to item 13, consideration and approval of construction bids. Ms. Morsec.
Thank you. At this time, I'll have Jeff Fisher from Gallagher Construction come up and present the bids for three projects this evening. Mr. Fisher?
Thank you again, Ms. Morsec. She just told me there's no slides, so you don't have to worry about any of the glory We do have three construction projects for your consideration tonight, the first two being the two new middle schools, the Warren replacement and the Timmer Middle School. We received, we received the bids on those on October the 13th, and we were very happy with the number of bids that we got and the quality of bids that we got. Those two projects together are right around $170 million, so it's a lot of work, and we were very happy with the response that we got. Got some good qualified contractors to respond. And so our total, I think that the total sheet was provided to the board, but the total for both projects is 178,161,383. And that includes all of the construction costs and the fees included in that. And then the second, or the third project, I guess, is the infrastructure for the campus makers, and the total on that is 2,457,469. So I'd be glad to answer any questions that the board may have regarding these three construction projects.
Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, just to clarify, so the campus maker bids, that is just for infrastructure, correct? We lease the buildings?
Yes, ma'am. That's correct. And that, those, that was previously approved by the board to go ahead and lease those buildings, right?
I hear none. Dr. Terry, do you have any comments?
Just one, I have to always point out, when we are $13 million under budget on a project, and so pretty excited about bringing this to you tonight. Just want to thank Gallagher and Huckabee. They always have to work extra hard to make sure that we're hitting deadlines and staying under budget, and that they've done it again. So thank you, guys, for the work that you've done on this project. And we would recommend tonight approval of the construction bids as presented.
Board, you've heard the recommendations. Do I have a motion?
I move that the board approve the construction bids as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Dobbs. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? I hear none. Thank you very much. Close session was taken earlier this evening, so move on to item 15, consideration and possible approval regarding the employment of professional contract personnel. May I have a motion?
President Ferris, I make a motion that the board consider approve the employment of professional contract personnel.
Thank you, Mr. Regan. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Burkhalter? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? And I hear none. Moving on to 16, consideration and possible action regarding the pursuit of sanctions for educator abandonment of contract. May I have a motion?
Mr. Ferris, I move the board find that good cause did not exist for Alyssa Allen, Cassandra Cothran, Roscoe Edgar Saron, Destiny Chavez, and Mei Li Niham to abandon their contracts with Fornie ISD and authorize the superintendent to take all necessary steps to report this matter to the state board for educator certification for further action.
Thank you, Ms. Dobbs. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Burkhalter, thank you very much. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? I hear none. Moving on to 17, consideration and possible action regarding the purchase of safety devices. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Ferris, I move to grant the superintendent authority to negotiate and purchase safety equipment as discussed in close session.
Have a motion, Ms. Burkhalter? Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Green, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? And I hear none. Moving on to item 18, announcements. I'll turn this over to Dr. Terry.
Yes, sir. I just turned off my page, so I apologize for that. We do have, just a reminder, we did present tonight the first reading, the draft reading of our attendance modification plan. We will have a community meeting on Monday, November 14th. Board will not need to attend that, but our community is welcome if they have questions and to ask and to see this information presented in more detail. We also do have next week a special called meeting, same bat time, same bat channel, right here on Thursday for a hearing over the attendance zones. And then we have our Thanksgiving break. Wanted to also remind the board, I think Mr. Fisher mentioned this, but a pretty cool ceremony that we'll get to probably only experience once in Fornie, and that is an OC topping off, and so just wanted to make sure, again, that you have that marked on your calendars, so that'll be on December the 8th, Thursday. So other than that, got some great events going on, got a big football game tomorrow night, all the way down in Barbers Hill for the playoffs, so don't, we'll explain later why we have to drive to Houston, but that is UIL's fault, not ours, so, thank you very much.
You clarify, what's the time on the 17th?
17th, 6 o'clock for our special call board meeting. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other questions from the board?
Yes, is there attendance zone community information? Is that, will that be held in the here?
It is in the boardroom, yes, ma'am.
If I hear nothing else, it is now 8:38, and we'll call this meeting adjourned. Thank you for your attendance.